May 14th, Planning Commission Meeting. Now call this meeting to order. Thank you for all for attending tonight's meeting. Before we begin, I would like to state that the Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and via a Microsoft Teams streaming application. All Planning Commission meeting information can be found on the Town of Monument website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendations for the town council regarding land use matters in the Town of Monument. Each commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review, which includes no prejudgment of the project projects. Should a commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight? Please say so now. Seeing none, I'll continue. For those attending tonight who wish to provide comment on agenda items, you may speak to the commission during the public comment sections of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first are asked to come to the podium and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Microsoft Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hand option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on the same subject. Again, thank you for attending. We will now begin the meeting with roll call.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Egley.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Hours. And Commissioner Hatch.
Here.
Thank you. That completes roll call.
Now, if you would join me in standing for the pledge allegiance. The approval of the minutes. I move to approve the minutes from the April 9th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ray, roll call, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five in favor, one abstained. Thanks.
You ready? Our first case, case number 2024-016, request for conditional use approval for outdoor storage as part of the development at 836 Sins Avenue. This case has been noticed for a public hearing. And I will now turn over to staff for presentation.
Thank you. One moment. Thank you. All right. As you've discussed, this is for the conditional use approval at 836 Sintes Avenue. This slide is to show that this meeting was noticed for public hearing. It went out to the public and it was available. As an introduction, the applicant, Mr. Chad Kuzbek of West Works Engineering, on behalf of Chandler Knop, property owner, is seeking approval of a conditional use for outdoor storage as part of the development and operation of an office/warehouse building at 836 Sintes Avenue. Some included attachments with our staff report included aerial location map and future land use map of the property, public hearing notices, the site plan for 836 Sintes Avenue, prepared by West Works Engineering, a drainage letter for Lot 2 of Lonnie Industrial Park, which is the property, and a draft findings effect. The conditional use criteria stated in Monument Municipal Code, Section 1803-320 include, "The proposed use is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan and other relevant town goals and policies." "The proposed use is generally consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district in which it is located." "The proposed use is generally consistent with any applicable use-specific standards set forth in this title." "The proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of scale, site design, and operating characteristics, including hours of operation, traffic, lighting, noise, etc." "Facilities and services, including sewage, waste disposal, water, gas, etc., will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining adequate levels of service for existing development." "Adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided, and any significant adverse impacts anticipated to result from the use will be mitigated or offset to the maximum extent reasonably practicable." Delays. Oh, no. Some information about the property or about the project, sorry. Again, applicant, West Works Engineering, property owner, Chandler Knop, location 836 Sintes Avenue. This location map shows you where exactly it will be located. Actually, that's the wrong map. Sorry. Yeah, it's not accurate. That's a better map. Sorry about that. So to the north of the property is more light industrial zoning, as well as a planned warehouse for ABC Landscaping. To the south is more light industrial zoning, some vacant properties, and then the Elite Cranes Planned Unit Development. To the east is the Union Pacific Railroad and a single-family detached medium density, AKA the Santa Fe Trail subdivision. And finally, to the west, we have public land. It's vacant land as of right now, owned by the Town of Monument. Here you can see the site plan for the actual property, where the intended outdoor storage area is, where trees are intended to be preserved, the location of the warehouse building, parking, landscaping, fencing, all of the above. Here are staff's proposed finding effect. "The proposed use meets the intent of the comprehensive plan's designation for the property. On-site circulation and access are designed for the anticipated type of pedestrian and vehicular traffic generated by the building. The building design in terms of orientation, spacing materials, exterior color and texture, storage and lighting result in a quality architectural design and is compatible with the Town of Monument approved design guidelines for Velani Industrial Park, which were reviewed as part of the site plan. The landscaping is a quality design that enhances the site and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood as shown by amount types and materials used. Adequate off-street parking, both standard and ADA accessible, is provided. And lastly, the proposed site plan fits within the context of the planned use pattern and roadway and utility systems of the larger surrounding area." And staff's recommended action is a motion to make a recommendation to approve the request for conditional use approval for outdoor storage as part of the development at 836 Sintes Avenue, as supported by the attached finding of fact in the staff report and described by the following documents: the site plan for 836 Sintes Avenue prepared by West Works Engineering, and the drainage letter for Lot 2 of Lonnie Industrial Park, the property. That concludes staff's report. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ray. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make public comments, you can come up to the podium, state your name, write your name and address down on the sheet there, and make any comments that you like at this time. Thank you.
I am at 17004 Park Trail Drive, which, as you guys described, was the residential community that is to the east of the proposed development. Our view is directly across from the proposed development. And we just had a couple of questions regarding the development. One, landscaping. It's very hard to tell from the picture there what they really meant by the landscaping, which would be, as I was looking at the picture, you know, on their, on their east side. I can't tell if the little dots are trees or what they are, but we're just, it's, we're, we're used to a barrier of trees separating the railroad from whatever then is built off of that, off of that road, looking at it from the east side looking west. And so we just wanted to make sure that, that at least one significant barrier of trees was going to be left on there. Concern number two, if the lighting is the same as kind of everywhere else that's been, that's been, you know, built there, then the lighting most likely will be fine. But is the lighting basically going to be just be pointing down lighting so it is not emitting light throughout the entire evening? That's kind of what we care about discussing.
The applicant like to address those questions? But let me check real quick and see if there's any questions online, and then we'll have you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Or?
At, at this time, I don't see any hands raised in the audience online.
Okay, at this time, we'll hear some answers to the question from the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. Ray, thank you for that presentation. Sir, I'd love to answer those questions. Little kind of background about myself. My name is Chandler. I was born and raised in Colorado Springs, grew up in Monument, went to Lewis Palmer High School. My mom went to Lewis Palmer High School in 78. Dad moved to Monument in 88, and in 1986, he founded Prescott's Microscopes, which is now the world's largest microscope refurbishment company. All that's here in Monument, the reason we're saying that is we have a basis here. The community is Monument, the whole family is here. So we don't want to do anything that we're, we're not coming in to make a gain from this land. We, community comes first. To answer your questions, the land is absolutely concerned when it comes to the optics from the subdivision. So our plan is to leave the entire row of trees in the back. They're going to be a minimum of 25 feet spaced, but with the same trees, so that sightline does not go away. Furthermore, we're going to put a fence behind the trees. It's going to have opaque slats, so you won't have any sightline into the lot whatsoever. As far as the photo metrics, we don't have any occasions of upward-facing lights at all. There'll be facing down off the building, one or two of that. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you so much, Chandler.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Sorry, one last question regarding the exact same topic, just for the outdoor storage. Just wondering what, what their, their plan is to store in the outdoor storage.
That's a good question. Thank you.
Great question. The land right now is being developed with, we don't have a tenant. It's going to be a leased property. It will be in construance or in construct with light industrial. So that will be approved by the Town of Monument, nothing outside of the already pre-approved usage. Most of it's going to be a service-related, plumbing, or electricians keeping stuff, landscaping. Forgot to mention the land, the property to the north, the one that has the building on it now, that's my cousin. That's ABC Landscaping. So we're all very connected and we're not going to do anything squirrely. We're trying to stay away from, if we want to do projects with the town again, not have a bad reputation.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Chandler. I want to point out too, if you're familiar with the property, I know you folks are. What's depicted as the outdoor storage area, I drove by and took a look today because I was curious myself about the trees. That outdoor stair, storage area that's outlined on, on that plot map there is the area that's already cleared. So that area is already cleared now. So, right, that's correct, right? So the, the building's going to go a little bit to the north in front of the tree stand. And then, yeah, like, like the applicant explained in the, in the application there, it, it does explain the fence, has chain link fence around it. And then on the back section, it has slats in it, so it's, you won't see through that, though. Okay, so no other questions from the public? I will now close the public hearing and open up commissioner questions and comments. And as always, I start with Commissioner Green.
Thank you. This, I also went by the property. There's a building that's framed out. Is that the building I'm seeing on this site plan? Is that something else?
I can answer it. So, thanks, Chandler. The, the building to the north, there is actually ABC Landscaping. That, that's an older permit that was issued, issued several years ago and approved several years ago. But this same concept is on here, they're preserving trees around the perimeter, and they're building the, the building in the center.
But the building is being built or has already been built?
It's, I haven't been out there in a while, but it's under construction.
Framed, right?
Yeah, it's framed. Not, not theirs. The one to the north is ABC Landscaping.
That's not it. So this one is, has not started construction that I could?
That's right. This is a vacant site.
And then, just, um, so we all have this clear, this is really not about the building. The building is a use by right. It is only the outdoor storage that we're looking at tonight.
That is correct.
The other is permitted.
But you're reviewing, you're reviewing for a conditional use for outdoor storage. Light industrial is permitted, is a permit.
And if for any reason we didn't approve the outdoor storage, they could still build the building if they wanted.
That's correct.
Not a part of this.
Per, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Green, per code. They, they would just be able to slap anything out there. They would still have to comply with lighting standards, placement setbacks, and so on.
Okay. I, so you don't know what's going in the outdoor storage area? And I, I'm thinking this over as I'm talking, but as a conditional use, we can put conditions on this. And, you know, we might want to consider height of what's being stored in the outdoor storage. Something I'll throw out there. Also, the fencing, the fencing is, do, do you know? Chain link with? Have you looked at something other than that? Because on a day like today, those slats don't do well all the time.
The slats are more important than trees that are going to block.
Of the wind, of this wind?
The trees are very mature spruce, and they are from ground level up to
15, 20 feet. They're going to, and especially 25 feet spaced, they're going to be touching. It's going to provide a very large wind block and, and sightline block.
The property to the southeast has fencing with some wood opaque slats. Is, is that something you looked at or have considered?
We did, we did look at the wood for things to start with.
Being wood, it's really the degradation over time that we want to stay away from. It becomes looking more industrial as time goes on. So we want to keep it with a clean, polished look for the light industrial. That's why I want the chain link.
Okay. And then, on, on the lighting, and this is a staff question somewhat. For this particular case, can we only look at the lighting for the outdoor storage? Because I, if I were a neighbor behind here and there was light industrial going up, I would be very much worried about the late-night security lighting standard. But I don't know that that's something we can condition.
You're, you're, you're able to make recommendations for conditions that affect, have to do with impacting the neighbors or other land uses in the area. But keep in mind that we do have a dark sky ordinance already.
Yeah, and it doesn't work. You know, you have to do is park in my driveway and you'll see that.
If it's applied properly, it's, but the, but you shouldn't be afraid to, to, to discuss and make recommendations for conditions. You, you have the applicant here. I think that, as Chandler said, that he wants to do the right thing. So I think some of your questions or concerns, if you were to ask him, you might find that he's already thinking about it, or it's, it's worthy of thinking about. We're certainly going to look at lighting as part of the construction documents before we issue permits for the overall site. But you can ask those questions of when would the lights be turned off? How many lights will be, will be remaining on? Will there be a light that turns on for motion every 20 seconds when the wind blows? Those are things you can ask. So please, please don't be afraid to ask those questions, and you can certainly make recommendations tied to the, the over, the use of the property.
Then, then my concern would be the lights on the north side. And I understand they're, I'm sure they're going to have hoods and they're going to be downlit. But if it's a LED and it's late at night and you've got it in security mode, I understand that when you're in a light industrial area and you're away from housing. But if that's what's interfacing with the housing, I don't know enough about today's lighting models to know if there are shields to keep it from going from the, the brightest lights going towards the neighbors. If that makes sense.
So if the north side of the property would actually have minimal lighting, because that's facing up the street towards Michael ABC's building. So whatever light's theirs is already there. That's the edge of our property line, because we're building north side on the property line. So it'd be more the east side where the concern would arise. That light is going to be diluted mostly by that tree screen. The visibility wouldn't come through because of the tree screen and those, and the, on the lower side, the fence. But the, the light as well will not go through. You have the hoods, you have the downward-facing light, minimal wattage and output, and all within code and, and whatever is deemed necessary.
And this is going to be for lease? This outdoor storage, so you said you don't know for certain what will be in there. But what are you thinking?
Really, it's going to be service industry. And landscaping is a big one. So you have to look at, a lot of companies are blending Colorado Springs with Denver. What used to be Springs-Denver is now all of it. And Monument just happens to be right in the middle. So you're having a lot of traffic come from one to the other, and they want a place to put their supplies in the middle. So for example, we're, we're speaking with Comcast. Comcast just needs a place to put their wires. So they can have guys come in, pick the wires up in the morning, go do the work, come back, drop it off, go home. So it's, it's very minimal. It's just, it's really just a storage location.
You're not expecting 50-foot drills?
We're not expecting cranes.
Okay.
We, the beater on the bush, we're not expecting cranes. That project, unfortunately, is probably why we're here right now. If we're just putting that out there. We do not want to tarnish our reputation and try to pull one over on the town. That seemed to, we'll let that be. But there's been a lot more processes that have been enacted because of that action. We don't want to cause further. So we don't have any intention of putting, the, the building is a single story. The trees are 15 to 20 feet.
Okay.
I don't see anything that's going above 15 feet.
And then, one more question for staff, because it's been a while since I've done a conditional use. If, if this owner sells the property and there are no conditions on this storage area relating to what's in it or how tall the things are that's in it, the next owner could buy it and put water drills or whatever, no height limitation.
Ownership doesn't really matter if, I mean, if, if there isn't a condition that's already stipulated in our ordinances, or you haven't tied it to the conditional use. This owner can, as long as they're complying with their code and complying with the, the conditional use, they can do it.
And it also needs to be said that it is still light industrial.
Right.
So at, at some point, there is, we're going to make it look pretty, but it's, it's light industrial.
I understand that. Okay. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Egley.
Thank you. I had just a couple of things. You answered the question on the trees. Thank you. Wondering, and I think Ray mentioned this, I sent Ray a note earlier in the week. But there's a height restriction of 30 feet in this particular area. Is that correct, Ray?
Yes, that is correct.
And I don't know if that's within compatibility for what you had in mind, Kathy.
That is a direct code requirement for light industrial zoning.
Building or equipment?
Building.
Right, but not equipment?
Equipment is not mentioned in code.
Yeah. So I think that's, and I think you mentioned just now, Chandler, that you don't anticipate anything being taller than 15 feet, but that's not a, obviously, that's not a guarantee 10 years down the road or whenever the case may be. So that's something we may have to consider. I guess also just compatibility in terms of design with everything else in the area of, of the building. What, what, what it looks like with everything else, again, considering that it's light industrial. Does it have that typical?
Landscape and building that you saw today, it's a one-for-one copy.
Okay.
So everything will be standardized.
Great. Okay. That's all I had right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Egley. Commissioner Peterson.
I think that maybe more question for staff. Looks like there's a lot of utilities and existing easements in the area. Is that kind of governed by engineering criteria as far as what's going in that area with conditional use as far as any potential issues with structures, permanent structures that are going in, that that's mitigated by engineering criteria? Is that, that the case there?
Well, those are existing, existing easements. They're not being created at this time. It's probably one of the reasons why the building is being located, where it's being located, is to avoid those easements. The, the underlying agreements of those easements are still going to be the, the rule. So if some, whoever has their utilities in that location need to get through, the, the owner will have to have the, have the material cleared and we'll have to actually fix the, fix that outdoor area as well after the work is done.
Makes sense. And as far as what is being stored in there, as far as concerns of hazardous waste, that's also, you know, still comes down to the criteria as being mitigated in that sense as well.
Correct. It would, it would, standard, our municipal code covers those, those items as well as other regulations that we have to follow.
Sounds good. I think those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Hatch, any questions?
Everyone seems to have asked my questions. But I, I'll just voice it. I am, I am receptive to a condition on height.
Thank you. Commissioner Hours.
I want to thank Commissioner Green for all the questions she asked, because I had many of those same questions. The only questions I have on comment I'm going to make, I'm going to wait to see what conditions might be put on. But I do have comment. It's a verbal recommendation that I'll ask the director to consider, and I'll ask the owner developer to consider. A lot of the questions that were asked here, we should have seen in the site plan, so that we didn't go through what we just went through to get the answers. So I recommend verbally, I'm not putting this in the recommendation, that the two of you get together and that they develop a site plan that when this goes to the council, because I know many of the council members, all the questions we're asking today are going to come up again at the council meeting, and maybe people other than the gentleman and his wife sitting there now. I'd assume you're his wife. What be asking these questions, wasting time that can better be explained with a better site plan? That's all I've got to say.
Agree. Thank you, Commissioner Hours. I just had quite one question for staff. Does the light industrial zoning permit, without a shadow of doubt, heavy industrial use, i.e. cranes or drill rigs?
So the, we, we can certainly pull up the, the municipal code and show you the list of uses that are permitted. It doesn't discuss things that are not permitted. It does require staff to sometimes make interpretations or relation. It does require staff to sometimes make interpretations or relation tie relation. One, something that's listed with something that might be related to it. So we do our best to protect the neighborhood and protect the surrounding properties by not allowing someone to take advantage of a loophole. But the code is the code and we do have to follow it or we have to modify it. So we we do have for other sections, the code will be coming before you and trying to clean up those things. I think light industrial will have some cleaning up to do as well. Nothing to do with this this case tonight, so I want to make that really clear. But maybe the neighbor to the south has given us food for thought. So we're going to take a look, take a look at the code there. I don't know if I answered your question. I but I do like, I mean, you're discussing height and type. You have the applicant right here. You can ask those questions of them to see if that's something that they're comfortable with. That way we can move forward with your recommendation to town council.
Thank you. Yeah, you did that did answer my question. And I because I think as you can tell, the concern is heavy equipment being moved in and stored there. As long as I would, I would think that as long as light industrial would prevent that type of use in the storage side of things there, I think that would, I think that would suffice. Question about the that surface area, is that going to be a concrete pad or is it just gravel? Yeah. And with regard to the trees. I I think I would recommend adding a condition if everyone agrees that, well, I mean, we have code that's in place as well too. But the code states that any healthy tree greater than six inches approval has to be given by the director. So I just want to make sure that, and I know you guys are looking out for the town. I just want to make sure either through a condition or recommendation that that we're working with Mr. Underlater when we're cutting the trees down, just to make sure that we're replacing the right trees. And it just protects everybody. Thank you. And discussion on that, what is there any conditions you would like to include in a motion? I would entertain a motion with or discussion of the condition.
I want to just, yeah, discuss conditions because there are two I would be interested in. One is that stored equipment not be higher than 30 feet, which is the building height for that zone. 30 seems pretty high. It doesn't sound like they're expecting 30, but I would want that to be the maximum if they sold the property. This, the second one I have is a little stranger. I am living downtown, I'm very worried about how bright lights can get, even if they're downcast. And I would like to put a condition on here that if the town rewrites its lighting ordinance, that this property be reviewed to the new ordinance. Because I can see the future controlling the brightness of the LED lights. And giving the property owner five years to come in compliance with the new lighting ordinance if that's possible. So you guys write an ordinance with a new lighting ordinance. It's approved, it's in the books. Normally, any approved plan gets to stay with what they have, no matter how good or bad it is. This condition would say if a new lighting ordinance is passed, they must come into compliance with that lighting ordinance. And and my concern is the residential neighborhood. I don't care about a light industrial park if you don't have residential on one side of you.
I think it's it's difficult to put a an unknown condition on a business or on a property. I think that that that's something we'll certainly take a look at when we, if and when we were to change the light code, there might be a sunset provision for everyone. And it'll have to be vetted out through public hearing and and with our development community residents and so on. So we can certainly take a look at that. But to take a single piece of property and and call it out for an unknown ordinance, I think might 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 be challenged. But that's not to say that we couldn't work with them today to make sure that they we address. I mean, I think he challenged probably hearing your concerns and your neighbors' concerns. That we could work with them to make sure that any kind of offensive lighting wouldn't be directed or have an impact to the properties to the east.
I'm comfortable with that. And and I hope if you do write a new lighting ordinance, you give give them so many years for everybody to come into compliance.
And we'll consider that with just about every ordinance to show that there if it's possible of a sunset provision. But that'll be something that you'll have to vet out at plan commission and at council.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, those are great ideas, Kathy. I think I think addressing it to the community as a whole too, with incentives possibly even because there's grants out there for this type of thing. So so maybe treating everybody the same and then and putting incentives out there for everybody to do, I think that's a great idea. Any other discussion on, oh, I wanted to mention too about the, I agree with the height restriction 100%. A lot of people might not know, but those cranes are about 14 feet high. That's it. That's it. So there, so things could be very undesirable to look at way below 30 feet. Just a suggestion. I think that's the the fine line, right? It's it's, you know, if it's Comcast, then it'll be vans with cherry pickers on them, you know? Yeah. Yeah, stuff like that. But yeah, any more discussion on conditions? I entertain a motion. I think we're good recommendations, I think, on the conditions. But and I actually had thought about including one myself with regard to the trees. But I don't think it's necessary because of code. I think code covers it. I think we're, I think we're looking pretty good here. I would, I would accept a motion then.
Could we have the motion read and clarity on?
Yeah, they're going to read. Somebody's figuring it out.
Okay.
Just so I I think what we're looking at is a motion without any conditions right now.
Not not the 30 foot height?
30 foot height is is it's kind of irrelevant because it's light industrial. So the building heights are already limited 30 feet. There aren't any vehicles around or I can't imagine things that would be stored there that are 30 feet hot, that are that high. That was
the condition on there that you just can't store anything in there that's taller than the building.
It's, I mean, it sounds kind of vague, but maybe, I think what we're looking for is is a condition that precludes storage of heavy equipment. And I don't know if that would be have to be more defined, more well defined in a condition or if it could just be.
Light and I think you could probably store that in light industrial. There's nothing in the code that that really talks to storage, just the the storage area. You know, it's like heavy industrial is usually has to do with what smoke, noise.
Oh, Commissioner Hours.
I like what I'm hearing her say. May I ask the developer question?
Sure.
Do you have a problem with the 30 foot limit on that building? 30 foot height?
I personally don't have a problem with it. However, we have to look what came before us and the conditions that they did not have put on them. So if I look to develop a piece of land and then the guy next to me has a piece of land, identical pieces, identical buildings, one has a condition, one doesn't. I don't know if that's necessarily fair. In that Viliani, no one else has conditions.
Okay, but you have no problem with that. So now I go to the director.
Well, again, I think I think you can, you can create, you can put a condition, you're making a recommendation for a condition that storage is maintained no greater than 30 feet in height. I would say to you that precedence doesn't doesn't flow. The it's a, we've learned from, the communities learned from its mistakes or from the bad behavior from other other developers. So they have the ability to change code. They have the ability to put in certain conditions to to make sure that they protect you as a property owner as well as the neighbors. So I I wouldn't tell them they couldn't do it because they allowed it for someone else. We live and learn. So if you want a condition for 30 feet, if that's acceptable to you, we could certainly put that in the recommendation. I'm sure council is going to chime in on this as well when it gets to them. For the same reasons, as you said, you're kind of paying for your, paying for others' errors. So but I leave it to you to decide what conditions you want to place on it.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion for recommendation to approve conditional use for outdoor storage at 836 Synthes Avenue as supported by the attached finding of fact with the following conditions. There will be no storage of equipment taller than the 30 foot limit required for buildings.
I'll second the motion.
The motion, second, Ray, would you take roll?
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith.
No.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Ugly.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one opposed.
Moving on to our second case. Our second case number 2025 dash 013 is a request for approval of a sketch plan review for Legacy at Jackson Landing. A proposed commercial subdivision. This is a public hearing and the case has been noticed for a public hearing. Now throw it to staff for the presentation. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you. One moment, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Chandler.
Well, good evening. So this next case is a sketch plan approval for Legacy at Jackson Landing. Similar to previous case sketch plans that have come before you. This is an opportunity for the developer to present their concept for the site. See if you show, show, show what they're doing. Ask for comments and directions so that when they come back later at a later date for a formal review and approval. You're not surprised and that they're not surprised by some of your thoughts. So this is, this helps them move forward without having to spend a lot of time and money. And allows you to to gain some knowledge on the project before before it comes to formally. The this had, this is a public hearing by ordinance. So we we have published for a public hearing and in the the applicant has posted signs on the property to show that there'll be a public hearing tonight before the plan commission. Sketch plans do not go to town council. You're final on this, you'll be asked to approve a a resolution at the end of the evening with whatever conditions and thoughts that in terms that you've come to agreement with the developer. The applicant, Chris Hake of Legacy Development Partners is requesting the sketch plan approval for Legacy at Jackson Landing under the provisions of our ordinance. The purpose of the code again is to assess whether a proposed subdivision aligns with the town of Monument's comprehensive plan and ensures compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. The you, there's an included project narrative and assorted plans or sketch plan which show a substantial commercial development anchored by 129,000 square foot national, what we're going to call major A retailer. And in addition to this anchor tenant, the development will be, will feature, the development will feature a mix of retail uses, including restaurants and a potential hotel. The secondary anchor referred to as major B is proposed to be to occupy approximately 16,000 square feet. While the final tenant mix hasn't been determined yet, the applicant intends to incorporate a blend of retail service and dining establishments. As we've done before, you're reviewing the sketch plan to determine that it's, it conforms with our town's comprehensive plan. That that is harmony, it is a harmonious development and with, I'm sorry, it proposes a harmonious development and lot pattern that is compatible with neighboring properties in the community. The lot and development pattern ensures there will be adequate light, air, parks, open space and other spaces for public use. The sketch plan design provides for adequate access to all lots and tracks proposed in the subdivision. And adequate, safe and efficient public improvements, utilities, community facilities and public places are available. Or we or will provide with provided with sufficient capacity to serve the subdivision. Included in your packet and primarily through a link to our documents on demand system because the drawings are so detailed that it would be difficult to look at on your on your, on your phone or never forget your laptop. So we've provided the Legacy at Jackson Creek sketch plan packet as well as a proposed resolution approving the sketch plan for Legacy at Jackson Landing, subject to any changes that you might ask for tonight. I'm going to jump over now and and give the applicant an opportunity to present the the overall site and look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Underlater.
Yeah, he can try. And if it doesn't work, you can always just control me and I'll flip it.
Sketch plan. We decided to present this project to Town Monument. We're really hoping for a great conversation this evening about this. As the director said, so that you're not surprised because we are going to be coming back to you pretty shortly. So this is a really great opportunity for you to to chime in now, get out ahead of things. And we're excited for the conversation. My name is Carl Barton. I'm with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated, and we are one of the part of the development team that's bringing you this project today. I am joined this evening. Oh, it worked. Did I go too fast? I went too fast. I need to be more patient. Sorry. Okay. I will get the hang of this, I'm sure, through the course of the presentation. So the development team, as I mentioned, with Kimley Horn. We also, the development team consists of Legacy Development Partners. That's Mr. Chris Hake. He's going to be giving a little bit of a presentation here in a moment as well. The Garrett Companies also part of the team and that's represented by Bethany Rooney is here this evening. And then RSP is the architect. They don't have any, we don't have anybody from them today, but I'll be speaking to the architecture. Don't give me any really hard architecture questions because I'm not an architect. But I will say that I am joined by Noah Bremer from Kimley Horn. He's in our downtown Cara Springs office and he's part of the the very important part of the team as well. And I will be deferring any technical engineering questions to him. So before I come back up and talk about the development itself in detail, I'm going to go ahead and invite Mr. Hake up to talk about the development team. This one right here.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us. Legacy Development Partners. So Legacy Development Partners was founded by myself last year, 2024. So 2025 will be our first full year of operations. We are focused on delivering innovative real estate solutions in high growth markets across the United States. That sounds really good. I think my wife came up with that. So I'm like, let's, let's run with it. It's great. The types of projects that we're looking at redevelopment of single tenant outlots, development of single tenant outlots, multi-tenanted buildings, grocery anchored projects and mixed use, which I'll touch on here in a second. So you might be thinking Legacy Development Partners 30 acre site, you were just founded, what's going on here? Myself, I am not new to real estate. Even though I look incredibly young, I've been in real estate for about 20 years. Most most recently with a very large quasi-national development company. I ran our Southwest region on the commercial side. Was responsible for over 50 projects in about 13 states throughout the Southwest. Um, was responsible for over fifty projects in about thirteen states throughout the southwest, southeast and Midwest before I moved to Phoenix. Um, myself and our partner in legacy, who I'll talk again about in a second. We have forty-five years of industry experience and just me personally, I've developed about one point three billion in projects. Over about the last fifteen years or so. So new company, but uh, older expertise on on my end. Uh, some of the retailer relationships, just on a national level that I've transacted with before. Uh, you've got everyone from Target to TJ Maxx, Sprouts to Starbucks, Blackrock Coffee, PetSmart, Raising Canes. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the national groups. There's countless other local and regional businesses that we love to put in projects. But our marketing group said you only have so much room on this slide. You can't put everybody, so we're going to try to put the most recognizable names on this slide. So in my career, that's um, a sampling of the tenants that we've done some work with. Go to the next slide here. So I talked about Legacy Development Partners, and that was the foundation of the company is. Everyone is treated as a partner. That's how my parents brought me up. You know, as their son, they treat me like a partner. Sometimes that was good and bad at at different times. But one of the first folks I reached out to when I was going to start this company is a gentleman named Eric Garrett. Um, Eric and I worked together many, many years ago. He broke off. He started the Garrett Companies back in twenty fourteen. Um, I've sat back and watched this company grow like a wildfire very quickly since twenty fourteen. He's grown it to a top ten multifamily development company um, across the country. They've developed over fifty projects in twenty-two states. They have offices in Nashville, Denver and two in Indianapolis. Um, they've done over twenty thousand multifamily units, including fifteen projects here just in Colorado. So very versed in the market. So I had this crazy idea last year, let's start a company. It sounds like a good time to do this. I got two young kids. Why not? Let's do it. Um, I reached out to Eric and said, hey, Eric, I've watched you do this. How did you do it? Give me some guidance. Give me some mentorship. And he goes, well, I want to do better. I've watched your career keep going after I started my business. I want to be one of your partners. How do I come in and help you? And you turn legacy into the commercial version of the Garrett Companies in terms of success and repeat business, et cetera. So Eric is my first partner in the company. He's put his eight hundred pound gorilla of a company behind mine. Leveraged back office support, capital support, debt markets, but most importantly, mentorship. He's come in and said, this is, this is how we're going to grow this and um, whether it's a small project, a big project like this one. You've got to have the same founding principles deal to deal. So the interests were aligned. We decided to formally announce the partnership on January first. And um, currently we've got about a hundred million dollar pipeline, hundred and thirteen, if anybody's counting, because I do. Um, and this is a big part of it, so we could not be more excited to be here. Look forward to answering any questions anyone has about the project, my background. Who's this guy standing in front of us? Just um, let us know, but I'm going to let these guys talk a little more about the project and then we'll answer some questions. Thank you.
So uh, Chris touched on the on the multifamily uh, area experience. That's a long list of projects right here in Colorado, many uh, very close to the town of Monument here, so. Um, just in general, a lot of experience and a lot, just a lot of a dedication to bringing quality projects to quality communities like the town. So very excited to be part of that. And I shown here just some images of some of the multifamily projects. Again, um, we are definitely talking about quality projects. Um, to bring to this community, so. So this specific project, uh, Legacy at Jackson Landing. And I want to start with first talking about the general location of this. So actually, the specific location of this. It is about thirty acres, thirty acres in size. Um, it is generally, I'd say, kind of, you know, in the northeast quadrant of the Baptist Road and I twenty-five intersection. Um, it's located west of Jackson Creek Parkway. That's the um, the label that's over there furthest to the east. It's directly south of the Home Depot and Coles and the Walmart development, so I'm assuming everybody is pretty familiar with with that area, the development that's going on and. And gives you an idea of location. Again, it's about thirty acres in size. Um, and. Okay, so what I want to do is talk about, kind of what I'm going to do is I'm going to give an overview of the, the kind of the big picture of the project. Um, and then I'm going to go into and discuss certain elements of the project. So this is a regionally significant destination retail. That is, that is the goal here. As we talked about that, um, hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot uh, major anchor there. It's kind of in the northwest corner of the site. Uh, that is the really catalyst for the development. Um, this is a. As a, as a major retailer, obviously, it's going to be new to the, to the, to the town of Monument market. It's going to bring visitors in, bring shoppers in to the town of Monument who are going to spend their dollars here. Um, before heading off home and it also, of course, very importantly, serve the the residents of the town of Monument and the growing community. So it's going to be a real amenity um, for the community. And of course, when that comes along, then you start to also get all of the other pieces that make a cohesive retail development, which is what's really being proposed here. So you see um, surrounding the major retailer, there are some other buildings. There's the uh, Major B building, which is located part of that inline retail building that's to the east of the Major A. There are some pad sites. Um, and I want to pause here really quickly to talk about why some of these buildings are in different colors. And the reason for that is, is the intention is that this would be a phased development. So I'm going to talk about the concept of phasing in in two ways. One is how it's going to come to you. And then how it's going to kind of physically sit on the land. So, but as a, as what's your purview this evening for the sketch plan is really to consider the the whole thing, so. Um, so we've got those buildings that are in the darker gray. That's really considered to be phase one. It's the the major retailer, uh, the smaller major retailer and some of the the inline retail spot. Um, buildings as well, but you also notice that part of that, those gray buildings. Is most of the circulation, parking and infrastructure for the development, right? So when that first phase comes in, it will also come along with all of the infrastructure that's needed to serve that. And then in a subsequent slide, I'm going to go into some of that infrastructure in more detail, but. That will come in the single time. You also notice that what comes in with that first phase is the connection to Jackson Creek Parkway. Again, I'll go into a little more detail there, but that's also part of that. And everything that's kind of in the, that's in the white, I don't want to, um, the, the. The uh, just the outlined buildings is subsequent phases. Now, we don't know exactly what those subsequent phases are. Um, we don't know how exactly how many of them there will be. But the idea is that as part of this sketch plan is that getting that, getting your feedback and approval on on the whole thing. Is that when those subsequent phases do come in, they conform to the the bigger picture that's being approved. And that's where it's going to come, that's where this will come back to you, because it's our intention here to go through this sketch plan uh, approval process. And then be back very shortly um, with a combined preliminary and final PUD and preliminary and final plat. Which you will have a chance to review before that goes on, on to the um, elected leaders of the community. So we've got this phased approach. Um, you are going to see, you're going to see all of the different pieces as it goes forward. Other elements of the of the project vision you really want to touch on here is it's quality site amenities and landscaping. I'm going to talk, I'll talk about that in more detail, of course, and then convenience, say, parking and circulation. And then just in general, the um, idea of the economic impact of this. This is intended to be a destination retail. It's going to bring in shoppers, visitors and dollars from both within and without of the community. So the site, um, I'm going to kind of approach this from east to west. So if you're looking at here, what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to talk about the major site components. And then some of which I'll talk a little bit more in detail. So starting to the east, you'll see there's the intersection there of Blevins Buckle and Jackson Creek Parkway. And right now, what we're looking at is likely there's going to be requirement for a signal at that intersection will be part of this. And then also Blevins Buckle um, is about half of a road right now. So the idea is that this development would build the other half. And that other half would consist of the turn lanes and the travel lanes and sidewalks and everything like that to to make it a complete street. Now, we are, we've already started looking at the, at the traffic preliminarily. Um, but part of the, the full PUD that's going to come in um, is going to include a full traffic study. So we're going to be looking at some of the details as going through that. Again, this is conceptual and and subject to change. Um, so the, so we've got the access there basically. So if you've, if you're familiar with that area, when you drive in and Blevins Buckle and it kind of dead ends and there's a gate, there's some blocks and some chains and things like that, right? That is the main entrance to the, to the proposed development. Visitors to development will have the opportunity to go straight, go straightforward. They'll go along the front of that inline retail heading, make, making a beeline for that major A retailer so they can do their shopping. They'll have an opportunity to park um, in parking that's very centrally located for the development. And they'll have the opportunity to visit, to park once and and visit multiple, multiple uses as the um, as the project develops. We've got some open spaces that are um, included and and integrated throughout the development. Um, when we've got the detention facility for the stormwater, the required stormwaters is generally located there. On the southern portion of the site, and I'm going to go into to that a little more detail as well. But I do want to pause here really quick, necessarily talking about the site and talk about comprehensive plan compliance. So this site is designated CC Commercial Center. Um, and the use that we are proposing here as part of the sketch plan is very much in compliance with that land use designation. Now, we are going to be going through for PUD zoning. Um, but the comprehensive plan is is adhered to. This meets the types of uses, right? The commercial center unsurprisingly with a name like that um, is for retail, uh, restaurant. You know, commercial uses, and that's really what we've got going on here. Um, we did talk about um, the retail restaurants. Some of them potentially drive-through, some of them sit-down. Um, a hotel, a potential hotel, you know, there's things up in the air, but these are all things that are currently um, being considered. So we've got the location, commercial center location, commercial center land use designation. We're not asking for any changes to that. It's actually the the description in the twenty seventeen comprehensive plan does highlight generally the area of uh, Baptist and I twenty-five. So we're right in the right location for that. And the attributes and characteristics of the commercial center are also met by this proposed development. Um, we've got, we're going to be proposing quality landscaping. There's open space, safe circulation. Um, and then adequate facility, adequate utilities. Were we working with Tribe View to make sure that there is sufficient water and sewer? We've already, you know, done significant work with them to try to to make sure that that is actually the case. We've got great access off of Jackson Creek Parkway. We're obviously not far from Baptist Road there, so really good access. Um, and compatibility with the surrounding uses, consistency with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with the surrounding uses. You know, just to the north, um, of course, there's the uh, the existing commercial development. And then to the south and east is vacant land that also carries the same uh, commercial center development. So we expect consistency now and in the future. So that's my brief detour to talk about the comprehensive plan. Now I want to jump back into talking about some of the site elements. So the first one, landscaping, pedestrians, circulation and open space. We'll start leading with this and I'll touch on a lot of things. Um, so you can see here in red, we've got the pedestrian circulation. And the idea here is a, is really twofold. One is safe, safe and convenient connection to the public. Uh, pedestrian circulation system that that exists on Jackson Creek and on Blevins Buckle, as I mentioned. This does, this development does propose to complete the other side of that road that would include a sidewalk. Um, and then within the site circulation, safe and convenient circulation that's within the site. So that if you do want to go and visit the major A retailer and then go get some lunch afterwards, you don't have to get in your car. And move it two hundred yards because you don't think that you can safely walk over there with your bags and things like that, so. Um, that's really important. It's something that's been given some thought already. Open space. Um, so the open spaces intend is intended to be strategically placed to so, throughout the site to support the uses that are there. Um, I do want to point out a couple of things that's related to that. The first one is it's uh, shown as more of a dotted trail on here, but along the western edge of the parking lot and then around the detention facility. Where is proposed to be a soft surface trail. So um, that would provide an amenity for visitors and workers on the site. Someone can go out there and they can get their steps in and, you know. Make sure that their watch doesn't yell at them for being sedentary all day. Um, so they can go out and do that. Uh, so this is conceptually showing that. I think we might, you know, as a conceptual nature of this, there might be some few changes. We might look to realign the northern terminus of that, of that soft surface trail so that it better. Meets the the sidewalk that's on front of the Major A. So there's, you know, things like that. But the idea is that it would go down and kind of around the the detention facility, which is intended to become a bit of an amenity for the site. There's a reason why it's not designed conceptually here, shown as a square concrete line um, rectangle. That with the water would go into, but it is supposed to be a little bit more naturalistic and things like that. So that's one of the concepts that we're working through as we go through this. Um, so I've got some images to show that. So obviously, we're going to you, want to use a palette of plantings that is um. Native to the area or, you know, appropriate for the area. Dripping irrigation is very important. It's shown there. We've got, you know, for the, for the parking lots. But one of the things I do want to mention about the the open spaces, as a commercial development. This is going, some of the open spaces not going to be um. Grass and things like that, right? It's going to be plaza spaces for people to sit together. Um, if you know, the, the. You know, eating out of the restaurants, taking their coffee and trying to find a bench or something like that, right? So that's the kind of open thoughts that we're giving to the open space. So right now, what what's shown here on this screen is just some conceptual images. These are pulled from the sketch plan application, but some ideas of what we're going for in terms of look and feel and that kind of thing. Stormwater. So now I'm going to talk a little bit more about this in in detail. Um, so the concept right now is, is I mentioned, there is the detention facility there. It's located in the southwest corner of the site. To get the water from the site to that detention facility would be a mix of above and below ground infrastructure to move the stormwater. So we would have, you know, your standard inlets, pipes, and that corner thing, that kind of thing. But also there would be opportunities and what we're planning right now, opportunities to utilize that green space for infiltration. And also to utilize some of the uh, um, parking lot islands for infiltration. It's a very important water quality, uh, water quality approach. And so I don't know if that particular row that's highlighted in green of parking lot islands is going to be the ones that have the infiltration. But the, the idea is that we would use some parking lot islands and and other areas where we can in order to provide that infiltration. Um, to protect the water quality. We've got some images there also shown on the slide, which are, you know, very conceptual. But that's sort of how those things can tend to work. Um, the water would then flow into the detention facility. Eventually would leave the site. Right now, it looks like probably in the southwest corner of the site. Um, it's where it would head out. And you know, we've got that uh, detention facility intended to have some, some curves and some lines to it and and ways to integrate that into the site. I do want to mention while I'm talking about here, one thing I didn't mention when I was talking about the phasing is that it is our intention. And yes, this is where I want to talk about it. Um, it is our intention that those areas that are, that are subject to future phases. Future final plats, final PUDs, that's the process that you would see those under, um, would be rough graded at this time. So we do the rough grading, stub out the utilities, really make them development ready. It's not to leave them as patches of dirt and and weeds and things like that until the, until someone comes knocking on those. So I want to make sure I was, did not drop that particular point. So um, last thing I want to talk about before we head into questions and answers and and that thing. I do want to talk about some of the the concept images um, for the architectural look and feel. Again, these are all conceptual. Obviously, this, we don't have any building designs. We're using right now. We're kind of, the term of art is being the precedent images. Uh, but there are some, some talking points and some themes here I want to, want to make sure to hit. The first one is the idea is that this be inspiration from the regional natural surroundings, right? So the natural surroundings, but also the surroundings in the other developments that are in the area. So that's what you've you've got here. So we've got um, prominent wood overhangs, sloping roofs, that kind of thing. Those both, those are really kind of two functions. One is they provide some nice visual interest. And the other thing is they protect um, from the elements, you know, particularly things like awnings. Right now, we all, you know, how we like to find our shade here in in Colorado, so that's an important piece of that. Right now we all, you know, how we like to find our shade here in, in Colorado. So that's an important piece of that. So visual interest. And also just, um, makes for a comfortable visitor experience, an attractive and comfortable visitor experience. So the retail frontage is, would really have an emphasis on transparency and openness. So the ability to see inside, to see what's going on inside. This is a really key, important thing. We want to get people to come and visit. We want to get people to linger, spend some more time with the town of monuments, spend some more money at the town of monument. These are all really good things. And so we want to make an, uh, architectural statement that makes that something that, that people really want to do. Um, part of the architecture, we, we talked about architecture as buildings, but really we're also be thinking about architecture of the buildings and the spaces adjacent to the building. So we want to see things and we're going to be looking at and proposing things such as integrated outdoor dining spaces, um, where, you know, you can sit outside and enjoy the beautiful views, the beautiful weather and, and have your coffee. Um, and then general, I think the palette right now is we're looking at, you know, earth tones to harmonize with the natural landscape. This is, you know, I think, uh, bringing that, that quality architecture, um, that quality image, mixing the, the tones and the materiality and, and things like that will make a, for a very attractive development. So with that concludes my presentation. So thank you for your time. It was a pleasure presenting to you. Um, but I know that we're here to listen. So we want to get your thoughts, um, answer questions and all of those sorts of things. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, at this time we will open the public hearing, see if we have any comments from the public. I don't think any public remains, but we have anybody online, right?
At this time, I don't see anyone attending online who would like to raise their hand to speak.
Give them one more second. Is there anyone online? If there's anyone online that would like to ask a question or speak, let's raise your hand or we will close public comments. And seeing none, this time we will close public comments, um, and close the public hearing. And move on to commissioner, questions and comments. Commissioner Green.
You're developing the entire thing as one PUD that includes the residential and, and the hotel, one PUD.
So there will be the, will be, will be applying for a consolidated, um, preliminary and final PUD. So thinking about it kind of like nests. So there'll be a preliminary, but you, you'll see these both at the same time. There'll be a preliminary PUD that's going to cover the whole project. And I do want to clarify real quick that there's no planned residential as part of that. So there'll be a preliminary PUD for the entire project and then a final PUD, which you'll see at the same time for phase one. Each subsequent, and I'll ask Dan and Ray to correct me as I, as I just talked about their process. Each subsequent phase will come in as a, an additional final PUD that will be, that you'll look to the preliminary PUD for guidance and meeting the criteria.
You said there's no residential?
No, there's no residential.
Don't know why I thought I read that. Um, that's fine. I, the reason I asked is you will then have one set of design guidelines for the entire thing.
That is, that's the intent is it'd be one, you know, as we're looking right now, yes, one set of, of design guidelines that subsequent final PUDs and final plats.
Those will include materials and color.
As, yeah, yeah, as required by the, um, PUD standards.
And you'll get those in with the preliminary?
Yes. So all that comes into the preliminary and then the final for the, for the phase one will all be in one package.
And we'll, we'll see the design guidelines.
Well, um, that's, that's what tonight's about. You can ask for that. So, um, please, yeah, give, give them, give them direction and, uh, feel free to amend the resolution to include those, the types of details you're looking for.
Preliminary PUD. I just want to make sure we get it in our packet, the design guidelines.
Yes. But again, um, if you're looking for specific design guidelines or details in those guidelines, this is the time to ask for it. I've been here for a year now. I know sometimes you get a lot of detail from some developers and you get no detail from others. So this, this is your opportunity to ask for what's important to you as a commission to make sure that this site meets your expectations and meets the conditions for a planned unit development.
Yeah. Well, you, you've obviously, um, done a lot of these. I just, you know, would like to see the design guidelines and make sure there's a thread of design consistency. And that last thing is you, you realize that, um, we don't have a lot of detail on here. So when we approve, if we approve this resolution, this really is not an entitlement. It's, it's just, uh, yeah, you're in the right direction. Okay.
Ms. Regley.
You know, I had a few items. Um, let's talk about Bevins Buckle Trail, uh, both the, uh, the one that terminates at Jackson Creek Parkway and also the portion on the eastern side of the, uh, project. That travels all the way over to Leather Chaps that feeds into the, the center of that particular, um, retail, uh, development. Will, will you be making any improvements to that portion of, uh, Bevins Buckle Trail?
Um, so let's go, we can go back to the site plan. Okay. Thank you. This works. So, um, talking about access and circulation real quick, um, because I think that that's a kind of shows how this all feeds in, right? So, um, you've, that, you're talking about that stretch of Blevins Buckle that's north of kind of where it comes in and then.
It shoots north behind.
Exactly. Just want to make sure I was hitting the talk there. So right now, as it's shown right here, um, it has a, as a realignment of it. Um, and then there'd be an additional access point on the north end. You see the, along the north edge of the property line there. And that's, and that's really, that's driven, that's driven largely by wanting to make sure that the access for loading and unloading at the major retailer is, is safe and, and doesn't have too much mixing of semi trucks and, and, um, passenger vehicles. So look at, we're looking at the potential for, for a realignment of that, but, um, we are not a hundred percent sure yet. That comes, that'll be, uh, fleshed out in, in higher detail. We'll know by the time we get back, we come back.
Okay. Additionally, at the, uh, intersection with Jackson Creek Parkway, you indicated that you, you thought that there was going to be a requirement for signal location, um, intersection. But that's not a guarantee, is it, at this point?
Uh, at this point, that'd be accurate to say that it's not a guarantee. So it is, and that was something that the traffic study will really flesh out. I would say, and I think we're pretty comfortable at this point saying is that is highly likely, that that's going to be required and that would be done as part of this development.
If it, if it doesn't come back with that, uh, requirement, would you be open to the idea of just having a right in, right out at that intersection?
Um, at Jackson Creek, I would say probably not, um, to be honest. Um, I think that the, the, the full movement of that intersection is, is very critical for, for development of this type.
Yeah. My concern is that, um, you're going to have as much or more traffic at that particular intersection as that you have further north at the lighted intersection with Leather Chaps and Jackson Creek, and even an intersection up from there. It's a right in, right out into the south facing of Walmart, if you will. And so I can only imagine what type of congestion and what type of safety hazards may be created with a full movement four-way intersection there. So that, that's my concern with that intersection without a guarantee of a, a fully lighted, signalized location that we're going to have some, uh, some issues.
No, I, and I appreciate that. I, and I think that the, you know, the traffic study and the recommendations that they, that the traffic study will bring forward are going to address both flow, like level of service and, and that kind of thing, but also safety as well. And, and I, I think all signs, you know, I've always, you know, nothing is guaranteed, right? But all signs point to that there's going to be a need for a lighted, uh, signalized intersection there at Blevins Buckle and Jackson Creek.
Yeah. I guess I'm, my concern is both in terms of it's not a guarantee plus timing because it may not. They may say it, it's going to be required, uh, when it's fully built out and then maybe five years from now, 10 years from now, whatever that may be. And so that's my concern. Um, second, uh, building height, um, and I think Ray may have addressed this for this particular, um, uh, property. What, what are the building height restrictions for this location, Ray?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I know that we email, we emailed about it. Yes. So I believe for commercial centers only, I believe it was also 30 feet.
30 feet.
Um, but again, this is a PUD and so, um, some of those things are subject to change and we will see that in their PUD proposal.
Yeah. So the, the reason I bring that up is that obviously it's, uh, phase two, you have the hotel listed there as a four-story unit. It's going to have to be some pretty short folks in the hallway to get that in 30 feet, four stories.
Yeah.
So that, that's, that's, that's my concern with that.
Is that a condition you're putting on it?
Rent to folks no taller than my wife. So we'll go with that. And then, um, stormwater detention, you won't be tying into or, uh, disrupting any of that on the north end of the development that already exists, I assume.
Yeah. I mean, um, we would certainly try to, each site is going to be responsible for the storm. So the site to the north was designed to be responsible for the storm, stormwater, no matter what happened here. And we're going to take the, you know, we're not taking any of their stormwater. We're not going to push this on anybody else either.
And it's, uh, 30 acres in total? Is that?
Yeah, it's 30 and some change.
And if I just look at the site plan, just eyeballing it, I mean, a third of that's going to be parking lot essentially. Would that be a correct assumption?
Um, I don't have the, the breakdown off the top of my head. I will say this, that we have as part of this development, this sketch plan, which is it, to get to this point, um, we've looked at the parking in a fair amount of detail. And the proposal, the, the final, final PUD, which is where the parking is really going to sit for phase one, will meet town of mon, will meet or exceed the town of monument code for the provision of parking. Okay.
Any, um, any possibility of, uh, conceptualizing access off of Baptist Road coming in from the south?
So that's a, that is a, quite a distance, um, for the properties and, and you know, and I'll, I'll kind of preface this as a, with all these things, certainly we can take a look at, I'm not trying, I don't mean to be dismissive of it all. Um, but there are, as you're probably not surprised, would be some, some challenges with that, with, with implementing that. Now I will say that we have already, um, we are and have in this design considered access, cross-access to development to the south. So right now, what we're looking at on this, on the, the sketch plan here is, uh, dedicating a portion of an easement for half of a road, um, whether it ends up being, it'd probably be private, but a half of a road along the eastern property boundary. That would do two things. One, it would provide access for the development for the, to the next parcel over to the east. Cause they would be responsible for the other half. And then also it would provide, um, access to development to the south. So we have thought about that cross-access to make sure that this is not a development with one way in and one way out off of Blevins Buckle. But that there's other, other access points as the area gets developed, um, but making the connection to all the way to Baptist, while, while it's something that we can take a look at does present some, some challenges, but that's.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's all I have right now. Thank you though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. Um, overall, I think this was, looks good. Um, I think it'll be great. Uh, I don't know if you're at liberty to discuss if there's any, uh, as far as users on the major anchor piece, I will, uh, defer that question to Kristy.
Not at liberty to discuss.
Major hanker?
And that's okay.
But you could probably guess who we're talking about. Um, they're very committed to this opportunity. They're very committed to a closing schedule being less than 12 months from today, less than 10 months from today. Uh, they're very committed to a construction start schedule, which would be 11 months from today. So they, uh, are very committed. That's the best way to put it.
Sounds like it.
That will be the catalyst for the rest of the development, getting the restaurants, getting the coffee shops, getting the other service uses that come along with this type of project. As they give us permission to formally announce who they are, it'll, um, be the gasoline to put on the leasing fire that we'll need.
For sure.
Um, our brokers, which are Denver based, are doing a great job with one hand behind their back on this. And we've already gotten inquiries from a tremendous amount of tenants. Uh, none of those tenants are signed yet. Um, they're kind of waiting to make sure that the anchor tenant goes. But once they do go, it'll be a, a domino effect.
Yep. That makes sense.
It's a, it's a suburban retailer that I think everyone would be proud of having in their community.
Yeah. Makes sense. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Um, another question, and I know you're in the preliminary aspects of this and, um, may not want to over commit to some statements. As far as traffic goes, is there any, has there been any look at the intersection of Baptist and Jackson Creek as far as improvements that would be required at that intersection? Um, and then along Jackson Creek as well, outside of the potential traffic signal.
Yeah. So, uh, uh, thank you, Commissioner Peterson for the question. Um, that intersection that at Baptist and Jackson Creek is part of the analysis. Yeah. So we don't have any, any specific recommendations, but it will be looked at. Okay. Yeah. Just wanted to check that. Um, I think those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hatch.
Hey, first of all, thank you. I have stared at that piece of land for 10 years and I'm very happy that you're take, trying to take it on. Thank you. My question, there's, uh, I'm also wanting a light, uh, going on to Blevins. I see that you're widening the road. That's great. Um, is it going to tap into the existing road that goes towards like, like the, uh, burger place? That's the burger. I'm trying to think of the Freddy's. Freddy's is right behind the first grouping of buildings off of Blevins. And then there's a, uh, oil change. And then there's Freddy's, a liquor store Freddy's. Is that road that I see angling up north from the entry into your development, is that actually connecting to the existing road?
Yeah, that, um, that does today.
So the flow would also feed that area there.
And there's also a curb cut on Blevins Buckle along the north side, uh, where there's that existing development and, you know, that will remain.
Okay. I want to say thank you again for bringing this in front of us as well, because I found it very, it's preparing me for the next step. And we're not getting blindsided. Okay. So we do appreciate you taking this extra effort and doing this wonderful presentation. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner hours. Well, first, having sat on here for a year or two, see a lot of projects. Uh, this is the best sketch plan that I've ever seen presented to the planning commission.
Thank you.
And I want to compliment the developer and Mr. Gardner. Is that your name?
My, my name is Mr. Bar, Carl Barton. Barton.
Barton. Okay. You got it wrong. For the presentation that you put together for us, uh, because one of the first things you said, you wanted to discuss and you laid out, and I think you've made it reasonably plain to us that we're going to see a lot more detail in the rest of the process. And I'm going to tell you, I've seen sketch plans come before us, that there was a lot of discussion. But when, when it got to us, the concept that was given to us certainly wasn't anywhere near what we, what we expected. Okay? Having said all that, the concept that was given to us certainly wasn't anywhere near what we, what we expected. Okay. Having said all that, could we go back to the site overview? Cause I, I I've been trying to stay up with all of this and I had trouble looking at this online, if you want me to be truthful with you.
Okay.
What is to the immediate south, north, east and west of this? That, what, what?
Yeah. So immediately to the north, if you're standing on the north edge of this property and you're looking at the backside of the Home Depot and the backside of the Coles.
That is wonderful. I can see why everybody's so happy. Okay. Having said all that, you need to say no more. I, I, I was figuring that, but I wasn't clear. And as you know, when I'm not clear, I ask all kinds of questions. Having said that, and having told you how pleased that I am to see a sketch plan like this come to us. I just want to make a statement to you because a lot of the commissioners make good comments and everything. I know you're gonna, you're gonna make possible sign changes you go. And as the commission knows, and as the director knows, I have a habit of speaking to developers as a citizen. Taking the opportunity for this forum to do that. Planning Department, this commission and the council has no way, nor do we want to tell you who to do business with and bring in businesses. This is citizen. I'm going to tell you, one of the things that we need in this town is another nice sit down restaurant. Another nice, we've got one nice sit down restaurant. On this side, and I'm talking about, we, Monument is made up of two sides. And this development is going to expand this side, I think, to meet a lot of the needs of the newer people that have moved in and the developments. And then we've got the historical monument. And I, when I tell my wife about this project, she's going to get excited. Okay. Cause she can be able to spend money. But if, if you would just try to consider, and we can't tell you what to do. I'm not telling you what to do, but if you can spend the time and effort to try to do business with a nice sit down restaurant that serves families in singles at night, a nice meal. I'm telling you, our town needs it. We don't have developers and owners that are doing that. So I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just asking you as a citizen to consider that as you. And the, the other thing that I'm, other comment that I'm, because I'm, I'm good at making comments. If you're going to get a nice restaurant, and if you can rearrange the area that hasn't been yet, you want to get a good business to come in, restaurants that have a nice view of the mountains are more apt to be conducive. So the green space, I think is what I'm talking about.
See, she goes down.
That's over here.
Yeah, honestly, right up there.
They have that mind, is what he's saying.
Yeah, they already have.
Well, now this is, wait, if I'm not confused, that is east though, isn't it? I mean, south.
That is south. That's. There's a big space of land yet still.
Whole food. This is maybe, am I confused?
That's north.
This is south.
That's south.
So it's right here. Wait, oh.
But there's going to be big vacant land before, because of where the old west.
This gentleman understands the point I'm trying to get to. And I'm not going to.
One, one question for you and then one, one comment for you as well. So like you, we love sit down restaurants as part of projects. It gets people to stay longer. It brings your family in. You get nice patio spaces. So our, our goals are aligned on that. We don't have a, unfortunately, a great example of a site plan that shows a parcel that we've dedicated for a sit down restaurant, but we have put thought into that. And if you look at the plan that's on the screen, the one that sits right off the detention pond. So it'd be the southern and most western lot. Right there. Perfect. Thank you. That is what we've targeted that pad for a sit down restaurant. You've got the detention pond behind it that gives you a little bit of an amenity. You've had the views to the southwest of the mountains. That to us is your sit down restaurant person.
Okay. I just, I thought the other one to the east of it was for the restaurant.
That could be a restaurant too. We have that laid out. That does have a, a drive through part of it.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. My, my question for you, what's your top two? Cause I'll personally call them and pitch them the site. So who would you like to have here?
Oh, you know, I wouldn't. Say, boy, that guy's flaky. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any because there's so many restaurants that I've been to. I just know. If I were to get a top two, it's, you, you might say, man, this guy's so out of whack. So I'm not going to go there other than to tell you, I think, based on the discussion I just had with you, and based on the feedback I get with you, from you, I got a feeling, you know, and, and your top two, I think would be right where I am. Whether you can make that kind of a deal happen. I mean, I know business is not easy, but I, I also know there are developers that won't take the time and the effort that it takes to get a deal to get a restaurant that's really a nice sit down restaurant. So I, I'd prefer not to give you my top two.
No problem.
Other, a very nice sit down restaurant, maybe something a little more elegant than the sit down restaurant that you've got a little bit north of you and probably the only sit down restaurant that we've got on the east side. But not so elegant that people who that live in the neighborhood will say, you can't afford to go there.
I understand.
And, and I appreciate the opportunity to have said all that I said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hours. I, I want to echo the commission's appreciation of, for the presentation. I like Commissioner Hatch. We've been waiting for this piece of property to be developed. It should have been developed a long time ago. It's something. If you do a chat GPT search with the parameters that were in the package today, it will give you a pretty good, good idea of who is moving it, but for Christian Peterson, I'll show you after. That being said, the town of Monument is, I don't want to use the word desperate. We're in great need of revenue in this town. And when I saw the packet immediately, and again, I, I am a hundred percent for this development, but immediately I remembered an article that I had seen in the OCN back about the tri-vie meeting back on April 17th. So Tri-Vie Metropolitan District approved an economic development incentive agreement between the, the district and legacy development partners. The terms of the agreement specifically, sales tax shareback and infrastructure commitments, I think warrant a much closer examination. So the town of Monument, I don't think was included in those negotiations. And I think it does have a direct effect on us, on revenue and monument. Absolutely, absolutely.
I, I'm not sure it does because the incentive agreement only contemplates the portion of sales tax, for example, that tri-vie.
That tri-vie would get. Okay. So that, that was one of the questions I had.
Yeah, I, I'm going from just memory here, but I think it's a.
It is.
Yeah, that, that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's super important because I, it, it, there's no way to access those documents right now. So I did look, I tried to find the agreement and you can't find the agreements, but yeah, I wanted to bring that up mostly to bring that to the public's attention, because I think they should know that stuff, right? That being said, I do have a couple of proposed conditions if, if I would be so entertained. And I think a lot of this fits in with, with what you guys are doing already, but this is a very big development. And I think it, we should be very careful and cautious and kind of work together to, you know, hash out some of these conditions that I've, I 100% want your feedback on the recommended conditions that I want to kind of propose. So we talked about traffic impact study. One condition that I would like to discuss is that a comprehensive traffic impact study will be submitted and reviewed prior to preliminary plat approval. The TIS must address regional impacts, including potential strain on Baptist Road, Jackson Creek Parkway and adjacent I-25 interchanges. So I think someone brought, Corey, you brought up exit to the south. So if that does happen one day, that's going to be very close to the I-25 unwrap. So the reason I'm asking for that condition is because in the future, it could definitely affect access and egress from I-25 as well. So I know it sounds like it's kind of far away, but I think it's a good idea to look at all that now. This is a really big development. I think it's a good idea to include all that in the traffic impact study when we do it the first time. I like the outline of the trails. I would like to, so we, we do also have, in addition to the comprehensive plan, we also have a transportation master plan, and we also have a parks, trails and open space plan that is very dated from 2003, I believe. It's kind of old, but I did recall on that. And these other two conditions I had, final plans must include multiple safe and interconnected vehicular and pedestrian access points consistent with the monument transportation master plan. And then additionally, include future trail and bike lane integration in accordance with parks, trails and open space plan to improve walkability and minimize vehicular dependence. And you guys have addressed a lot of that inside. The town is currently working on our updated comprehensive plan. We're calling it Monument 2040. And trails, parks and open space are a large part of that. So I would like to consider that condition as part of approval of this sketch plan, just so that we can make for easier integration, once the comprehensive plan is done, if that, if that meets everyone's approval. And then on top of it, the last thing I want to do is, it's not a condition, but a recommendation. A recommendation that additional public outreach opportunities be arranged, you know, that you put on some public meetings, if you will, have kind of like a town hall, kind of explain what the project is. I think what we learned from Canexus, which is on the east side, was that benefited the developer greatly. If you can get out in the public and talk with them some more, before we get to that preliminary and final PUD, I think that would, that would go a long way.
So have a public opportunity prior to the actual preliminary final PUD meeting.
Yes. And I think that, I think it's just a great way, just a community outreach.
Fine with that.
And, and people really seem to embrace that here. Communication is key. So I think that, I think that goes a long way.
Always is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Same thing my wife tells me.
Like let everyone else enjoy the presentation like we did tonight.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's not an issue. I've got, no problem.
Yeah, I think it goes a long way. We're good. We're good. Did, did those make sense? Did I read those too fast?
No, no, I think you're good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. It's like I said, want to work together on it. I just thought it was some things that were kind of important that we, we might want to include in, in the sketch plan.
Yeah. On that note, with those conditions, are those not already part of what the criteria that needs to be met with to the town to begin with? Are there, another way to frame it, are those conditions necessary or all those are under the ordinance and criteria that already has to be met?
My thought, my thought with the traffic study was calling out those specific areas that sometimes seem to get missed when we do a traffic study.
I, this is, this is your chance to put things that are important to you, whether they're in the code or not. I mean, you're highlighting what you're going to be looking for when they come back. So I think it's, I, I think it's, it's more than acceptable. And they, they, they're interested in, that's why, that's why he's listening right now. He wants to know what you, what your thoughts are and, and I'll work with them to make sure that we really, we truly address those. It's, it's been great working with them. They've already been listening to a lot of those, those things just at the staff level, but they've been hungry to listen to you as well. So.
No, that's, I, we could tell that you guys have been listening and this is not, this doesn't mean how to beat down, but just want to kind of make sure that we're encompassing everything.
Yeah, only hesitation.
Yeah.
If there's, and hesitation might not even be the right word. Very tight schedule. If we miss this schedule, the project misses potentially altogether. So we've just got to be really cognizant of how do we work with the team.
Absolutely.
To stay on schedule. And we've gone through probably timing more than you guys want to go through it at this point. But that, that's my only, that's where my wheels are turned is how do we keep our submittal schedules the same and not have those delayed? That would be the only concern.
And, you know, I think some of that would be working with staff. You know, I'm thinking of, you know, to get in the minutia, for instance. We had to send out for another set of traffic counts and another analysis. Dan and Ray, maybe we don't have the full study in at the first submittal. But what I think was more important from a scheduling standpoint is why this conversation is so important. We want to make sure that we get your input tonight exactly right. If you've come a schedule standpoint, the big thing is, is we need to hit the mark when we come and see you again for the first time, we need to be, we need to have it right.
Be ready. Yeah.
And that's why we're, you know, there's not a lot of like, oh, we can present to them and see what they say and, and the planning, see what the planning mission says. And then if it's not right, we'll be back the next month. We don't have that. And so that's why the hesitancy, I think from a scheduling standpoint on the submittals, if we need to do another analysis intersection, maybe it doesn't come in on the first one, but it comes in the second submittal, you know?
We'll, we'll talk about it. So there's also opportunities, just simply a testimony from your traffic engineer to, to, to speak on behalf of some of those issues based on what they, their, their knowledge of the area and so on. So, um, but I'll, I'll work with you to, to, we want to maintain that schedule and provide them the information and then town council ultimately the information to make this, make decisions.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it comes, again, not prejudging your project or you guys. We have a lot of experience with horrible traffic studies. We do. At most recently, you might've heard about a certain project that's happening with the town of Palmer Lake and a, and a large retailer from Texas and
Maybe I've heard that.
Yes. But for, that's a great example of a, of a horribly done traffic study. So it didn't include, there's a lot of school traffic. There's lots of things that just, and, and a lot of times what we see is that things are done on certain days of the week at certain times to present a certain result. Not saying you guys are doing that, but we would love to have an all encompassing traffic study that includes all those elements. Cause Jackson Creek Park, Parkway is evolving as we speak. There's, there's a lot of traffic on there now, a lot of improvements that are, that are in work. So, so that was my reasoning behind that. I don't want to throw you guys off schedule for sure.
Can we just speak to that for one second?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, my name's Noel Bramer with, with Kimmy Horn. I'm also not a traffic engineer, but I, I did work with our traffic team to, to get the counts set up and those counts have been completed. We just don't have the study yet. So I think the, the reasoning for asking about the, we would have to start over and school's about to be out. So we would be getting inaccurate counts for, we, we don't have counts at I-25, but we do add Jackson Creek Parkway and Baptist. So I, I think if, if an access was proposed or, or ever came into play off of Baptist, it would require new counts by itself and, and a new analysis for that single turn. So we, we will have counts all the way along Jackson Creek Parkway, all the way down to Baptist. And I've seen some of the preliminary work they've done. I, I think you guys will be very satisfied with it, but I, I just don't know that I-25 can, can be included unless you, you know, we, we can, we can work to provide a factor, an increased factor to, to account for school traffic, but generally that's, that's perceived as less ideal.
Well, if I could add to, we, we are, Monument 2040 does include a, a traffic study as, as part of that. And we have a specific consultant who's looking at that and they'll be looking at Baptist and, and the big. And we have a specific consultant who's looking at that and they'll be looking at Baptist and in the bigger picture. This is more um more myopic, it's so to speak, it's smaller. So I wouldn't want to um have them overanalyze uh uh other issues. They're they're contributing, but they're not the they're not the the challenge, so to speak. So um we we will work with them as closely as we can to be and to provide as many answers as we can um connected to their project. But I think there are some questions that we won't be able to answer um until later when we have a bigger picture, kind of the bigger picture elements and what we're what is a community are are looking for that area.
Does it, does it ever happen, does it ever occur where a traffic engineer could just speak to just based on available currently available data on on potential effects and whether or not it?
They can't, they can't, they can provide testimony in a meeting. Well, it would be absolutely, it would be acceptable, but I mean, you have to, they're they're not going to give you, they're not going to make public testimony that's false. I mean, that it not a good one.
Right.
So and I um based on the the on the presentation tonight, I think you can you can jump to the conclusion that they're not going to bring somebody here to who's just gonna pass false information to you. So um I I I think you should be confident that we're going to provide you a a study that provides you enough information, doesn't prevent you from asking questions. And if they do have their traffic engineer here, then I think they might be able to answer those questions for you. And again, what you you're making a recommendation to to town council. So if there's certain things that um that you'd really like more information about that, but doesn't prevent you from stopping it, you can put that in there. And then when they go to council uh three weeks late, three or four weeks later, then they'll they can answer those questions better.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
So with those conditions, do we need to rephrase those at all in order to accommodate some of these pieces? Or are they okay listed as is to move forward and not to weigh and be able to?
Well, let me let me list them back to you so I make sure I understand them. Um I'm I'm gonna start at the the bottom and work my way up. You're requesting that they have a public meeting outside of the the Plan Commission forum before that Plan Commission meeting. Or was it?
Recommendation.
It's a recommendation, okay.
That was a recommendation.
That's why I get to ask questions, that's good. I have uh you want them to refer to and and make sure they are understand the 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 components of other plans that the community is uh approved, such as the traffic plan and the trail and park plan, so they can reference those. Those later on in our Monument twenty forty plan will actually be part of the comprehensive plan, but they are separate plans that you could find on the mind uh on the comprehensive plan page. The third item was a comprehensive traffic impact study, uh impact plan. Or I'm sorry, imply, I said it right the first time, a traffic, a comprehensive traffic impact study. I've heard a lot about traffic lights tonight. Is that a concern or is that a condition? Just it it's a concern, right?
Actually, for me, it's a condition that um I would like to be it to be a condition that that would be a right in, right out until such time as it's determined or mandated that that intersection have a full service traffic signalized.
So you want you your condition is you want a traffic light there at the beginning of the project, not at the end?
That's correct.
Okay. It is right in, right out, right now, I believe. It's well, there's a left turn lane coming when you travel north.
No, you can.
You can't turn left.
You can turn left and go north, you can turn right. And um so it's it's a full access even from across the street from Rex Plus.
I think that's actually the the most critical condition you've got in your list right now. So I think that that you have to have that conversation with them as you're as you're moving forward here.
We can create uh the condition for right in, right out, because existing conditions are full movement. So be, yeah.
Oh, no, but you could.
But I the right in, right out is your solution, so let's stick with what you're asking for. I the because the traffic, a traffic consultant will tell you what what the the what you can do before then. But if you're looking for some, you're looking for formal traffic control at the entrance to this development at the beginning of the project, not when it's warranted later, when whatever um second phase or third phase comes in.
That's correct.
Okay, I I just, that's why I want to understand and I want to make sure they understand that that's what you're asking for.
This is at this is at Jackson Creek and.
Yes.
Buckle.
That's correct.
Have to convert that intersection. If essentially you're saying is if the first phase does not warrant a signal, then and and the developer chooses not to install that signal because the warrant is not met, that the intersection would have to then be converted.
Right in, right out.
Right in, right out. Should be for southbound traffic only, right in, right out.
Yes. So yeah, that that's why I want to make sure it's a it's your choice on the to include the traffic light and the improvements. And I guess what I've heard from them is that they don't want it to wait for when it's warranted later, when the hotel comes in or some other piece, other factor. They they want to make sure it's upfront.
Yeah.
There you go.
I do think we're also all signs, all signals are pointing to that the first phase, which is going to generate the majority of the traffic.
It is.
Is gonna is gonna trip the the warrant on the signal.
May I ask a quick question? Who owns the land um between your southern border and Baptist Road? There are two parcels, it looks like. Right. Right. I mean, they did, I didn't know if they still did, because there was a court case and ten fifteen years ago, and they sued Baptist Road and and got it access off Baptist Road there. I don't know if um.
The property's south?
Yes.
I mean, I would speculate that those parcels upon development will get an access off of off of.
They have it.
They have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I so I I guess we went back to the the for the traffic lights, just to clearly indicate what their plans are at the it when they come in, which I think they're already showing that they're doing that. But it look that you want to make sure you understand when and why, when the traffic light's going to be um installed and so that we can make a your decision to recommend uh approval or not of the of the preliminary and of PUD and then the final PUD for that first phase. Um and the last condition I had on here um and is as Commissioner Greens is that uh we have a detailed design guideline established for the entire property. So I I think that were all the conditions I was hearing. If that's the case, then that's what I would um modify the resolution with those conditions um for uh your your chair to be able to come in and and sign that resolution. Then I would pass that on to them so they they've got solid direction moving forward.
Just make one clarification on the traffic. Certificate of walking.
That would be. Yeah, yes.
Um I think that I that's why I was trying to make it that you're going to clearly come in with a plan for the traffic light. You can, that's a that's a detail that we should probably work out during the public hearing. I I don't want to tie your hands today. I I just want to, you understand that that's important to them. So we'll, of course it is, right? It's your choice um and uh that section of road, if I'm correct, is actually going to be maintained by TriView. Uh the traffic light will be maintained by TriView and those improvements, so um. And I think again with uh this size, this size retail, um it it's it's I don't, I find it hard to believe it won't be warranted or desired by the re by the establishment, by the retailer it's coming in, so. That's what that's what I have, so I'll 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 stop.
Commissioner Rares, I.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Before vote, I just want to make sure because not clear on this condition yet. When when are you, will the condition say that we want a lot of input from them at what point on the traffic study?
That will call the preliminary.
Preliminary, okay, not the preliminary, not the not the uh.
Final.
So Commissioner, what they're going to be doing, this is actually, you've done this. I'm going to repeat even the overall site, just the final for that first port.
Okay, I I'm okay with that. I just, I thought we were talking about when they come in with the plat.
And that's going to come together, it's all at the same time.
Oh.
Yeah, it's all going to come at the same time.
Oh, well, okay, that's that's where I missed. I just like.
That's why they're trying to, it's scheduled, they're trying to.
Because I'm telling you, and I'm, I don't know any of the people in this room, nor have I worked with any of the people in this forum, but I that are standing in front of us, but I want to tell you the attitude that I've heard, uh I have every confidence that you're going to do the most reasonable thing. And I just didn't want to make sure that if I voted yes on this, I wasn't voting yes on the commit on a on a uh something that's going to put undue pressure on you to go up to the council for them to say what the heck is the planning department talking about?
We're definitely not trying to tie.
They're gonna do that anyways. If to just to help you out, they're done as a up on the screen is a recommended action. The only thing that's not in there um is just reference to those conditions. So if you wanted to modify this motion to include uh the the conditions that were listed out by the planning director, that would that would suffice. And we'll go ahead and modify it and and then uh Vice Chair Smith, you'll be able to make sure that we we did what you asked us to do before you sign it.
Thank you, Walt. I'll make the motion. I make a motion to approve the Legacy of Jackson Landing sketch plan as supported by sketch plan approval criteria eighteen tac zero two tac two four zero and described by the following documents. One, Legacy of Jackson Landing sketch plan. And two, Resolution number O three twenty twenty five, a resolution approving a sketch plan for Legacy at Jackson Landing to include the conditions as agreed to this evening and as outlined by the planning director.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes six in favor and unopposed.
I'd like it noted that Commissioner Hatch was smiling when she voted yes, so.
Thank you very much for your time this evening, appreciate it, thank you for your time and input.
Thank you so much for the time, we appreciate the forwardness and and having a discussion. We appreciate it, we look forward to seeing you again.
Yeah, look forward to seeing you as well, thank you.
At this time, we will discuss.
Yeah, I know.
Non-agenda public items. If there's anyone, there is no public presence, so if there's anyone online that would like to uh speak to non-agenda public items at this time, raise your hand. There is nobody online, so we will close that at this time. Reports, communications and announcements, we'll start with Commissioner Green. Done? Commissioner Egley, done? Here's a no. Commissioner Hatch, done?
Commissioner Hours, that's a good comment. The only thing, and again, I think in the past, there has been something provided to us that clearly shows what's to north, the south, the east and the west. I didn't see that in any of the two presentations we had today. And it certainly helps me, and maybe it's because of my age, it's a problem, because I am the senior. And uh that's a pun that's intended. But uh it it just helps a lot of things.
Well, we will, we'll incorporate that in the future on the we we try to we try to stay, um to provide you the briefest overview for a sketch plan and allow them to do that. But we we can certainly put that back in there to help you orient yourself with the project.
In in if I said this once, I'm now saying it twice or second time, third time is I appreciate the way you're working with developers, to get developers to come forward with us with good, the best projects that we can get, because I have seen projects come under your watch in a much better manner uh than many previous directors.
Ray and I are working really hard, so.
We do, I go, I go Commissioner Hours appreciation, we appreciate you guys greatly.
Mr. Chairman, I I'm sorry, I have one quick comment, I just wanted to say thanks, Ray. I had some questions and I posed them to Ray via email and he responded within three or four hours, not just with a black and white, but he gave me some real life examples and I appreciate that and uh thanks.
Awesome, uh I believe we have an announcement from staff.
Well, so the existing conditions report will uh for the Monument twenty four twenty forty plan should be uh to us by the end of the month and draft. And then we go into the steering committee uh in the second week or third week uh, yeah, seventeenth, I think. Yes, June seventeenth, the steering committee will be reviewing that and uh finalizing that. Um and then we are going to be asking counsel uh to have another joint session between Plan Commission and Council right before one of their regular meetings in July. Uh it won't be to real to approve the existing conditions, but I think it's important to keep you um up to date on where we are in the process and what documents and what information we've collected. So uh we'll be, I think it's the second council meeting is what we're aiming for in July. At five o'clock, I promise I'll bring dinner. And I'll have a bottle of wine afterwards, whatever you need, but we we want you to come in and actually talk about where we are. And then we'll talk about the vis the the beginning of the visioning process, which hopefully will have already begun uh in June. So uh uh we already have our first uh our first pop up um uh setup for the, I'm going to get this wrong, the Art Hop downtown Art Hop. Uh so we're going to have our our outreach beyond people out here um at the Art Hop and uh talking with the the community about what we want for the town. So that that would be the first announcement. The second announcement, which is what you were alluding to is uh that uh Chair uh Tru- uh Trujillo has decided to step down as the chair. He's just got too much stuff going on and um it work. He doesn't want to leave Plan Commission and and I'm glad for that. He's a he's a valued member of the Plan Commission, uh but he just doesn't feel that he's in the in the the right place right now to lead as the chairperson. So um with that, uh we're going to be uh probably asking you um either tonight or at the next meeting to uh set um to vote for and appoint your new chair and vice chair. Again, there's no pressure tonight, but at the next meeting, that would probably be the first thing we're going to do is just make sure that we uh have some we have a effective leadership uh to keep control and of the meeting and make sure we get our business done, so.
I moved that we put it on tonight's agenda to have that vote and get that done. All the key players are here today.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I I know it's kind of blindside for all of us, but yeah, if we want to have a discussion, we have a discussion and yeah, and it's, yeah.
For that vote?
We could, that's a, that's a thought.
You don't, you don't need it, but um but I think it's I don't know.
Yeah, it's hard to.
He's these, he's his job is keeping it pretty pretty busy. He's out and he's not right, right? He's currently working in Florida right now and will be back till the end of the week, so um whatever his profession is right now, it's keeping him pretty busy.
Well, I would move that we go ahead and uh appoint Commissioner Smith as chairman tonight and then go ahead and take consideration for vice chairman right immediately after.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll do it, yeah, I'll do it if you guys.
We use the other domination first and then just kill both of them.
It it's up to you. Yeah, I mean, if you want to nominate someone else tonight, but.
Commissioner Egley.
I would second that.
Okay, all right, good.
So you're the chair, so would you ask for a vote or all in favor type of thing and just call it?
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Very good. You're.
Thanks, buddy.
I that took a year of both, I think. I think it was pretty clear and I didn't see a competition, so I I appreciate that. Uh I appreciate all of you actually for the work, the work and the commitment that you're doing here.
Vote of confidence, guys.
So, yeah.
I will try to do my best.
Um I I have not had the opportunity really to dig for that, but I I am going to work on um bringing in um a student both at uh here for Plan Commission and also at Town Council. I just haven't had the uh really the time to do it. I think we'll uh um as we're getting into the schools in the fall uh for the comprehensive plan, I think that'll give us a lot more opportunity to work with the student bodies there and and see if we can find a volunteer who might want to be a lead on to Plan Commission and to end the Town Council.
I'm happy to offer a pickup and drop off if we if that's needed, like to get students here, I'd be happy to do that.
Very good.
Do we have any alternates?
I do have, I'm actually going to be meeting with someone uh the 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 following Memorial Day weekend, they've we've received an application. I'm just going to sit down with them um and make sure they understand what they're getting into and answer any questions. And if. and make sure they understand what they're getting into and answer any questions. And if if it all works out, then I'll bring that app, they'll bring their application to council for appointment. So that's one, but we're always looking for others to to follow Commissioner Hatch's example and step up.
Yeah, I did. I I shared because the town put out a notice too. So I wanted to share that we, there's a couple of, you know, local groups in the community, social media and stuff where I share it, but talk to your neighbors and stuff, please, like yeah, we got, I've have a guy who just moved into my neighborhood. He was on a, he was a planning commissioner in Illinois. And he's also president of his HOA. So I'm trying to wrangle him in and, you know, get him, get him, get him to participate. So.
It's great. You'd be surprised how many applications we receive for people who don't live in town. Because we have this, we have this blurred boundary. And so people that there quite a few people are interested in participating and they'd like to be in positions, but you have to live here and you have to live with within the boundaries and for and I I don't recall, but it can't just be, you can't just move it and you have to be here for a while.
You have to have been a resident for at least a year. That's home rule stuff.
Yeah.
All right. Kind of a motion to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned at eight six, eight sixteen P M. Thank you, everybody.